Call tonight's meeting to order at four thirty P M. If you could just stand for the pleasure of the minutes.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一物.
Do we have any public comments on agenda items? Do we have any public comments?
I'm here on behalf of Kate Moon.
So if you'd like to come up and speak, you can say. Okay. Sure. Just state your name and your affiliation to us more than anybody.
Absolutely. I'm sure you can ask her. Ask.
Is that okay right now, like in public or?
I think it's up to you.
Fully vaccinated. That is, I mean, for just to speak on behalf of our staff.
That is, so that's your discretion if you want.
Are you okay with it?
Okay. I'm fully vaccinated. My name's Kathy Rita Agham. I've lived in Seabrook for twenty years. I have four children, three have been through the school system. Two of them have the pleasure of having Kate for their fourth grade teacher. So I'm here to speak on her behalf for the impact that she left on both of my children in completely different ways because they're completely different children. First you had Marissa. Honestly, Marissa was so shy back in those days. I'll probably cry. She brought Marissa out of her shell. She really did. She has a way of connecting with the kids and it made an impact on Marissa. She came out of her shell and she's doing well. Patrick is a completely different child. Patrick struggled. Patrick struggled all the way up until he met Kate. A lot. He struggled a lot in school. For family reasons, emotional reasons, school was not his favorite at all. And Kate had a way of connecting with Patrick. Patrick was drip. Patrick wasn't a behavior problem, but he was drip completely. And all his other teachers, they couldn't connect with him. He would just withdraw and nothing. We got nothing out of Patrick for three years, four years because he went through kindergarten. Until Kate. And Kate had a way of reaching him and connecting with him. And it was sincere and kind. And we struggled with Patrick a lot. And I just want to say what an impact she's made on him. And if you asked him today, he's gonna be twenty in September. He'll say she was his favorite teacher because she made him do schoolwork in a way that he didn't fight it. And it turned him around completely. Not to say that he didn't continue with some programs, but it was Katie that got to him. So when I heard what was happening, I had to come in and speak on her behalf. So I want you all to know that she left an impact on two of my children. And I had hoped that Riley would get her this year. But COVID happened and we all know what happened. But I just, that's what I'm here to say. Kate is an amazing teacher. She has a way of reaching the kids that many teachers don't have, that ability of doing. Thank you, Kate.
Go with Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Say anybody else? So we have the approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes for May eleventh.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Online voting is open.
Oh, look at that.
This is different. You want me to enter your vote on here, Jessica?
Yeah, please. I have that vote recorded. Motion passed by two. I think I did join the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we have the presentation from middle school C B U.
Jessica, did you want to move that?
Oh, yes, actually. Sorry about that. We're, everything is short on time, so if you guys don't mind, can we do the non-public now? So looking for a motion to enter non-public. I'll make a motion that we enter non-public.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Online voting is open.
We need to stop the recording.
You guys are non-public for four thirty six.
All right, so we're out of non-public and there are any motions to be made in our discussions.
So I'd like to make a motion not to approve the move of Kate Moon for third grade, fourth grade to third grade for next year.
One second. All those in favor?
We'll do that one here.
I still like it from public.
Oh, yeah. No, no, that's fine. I think I have this typed correctly. Motion to.
It is good practice.
It is good practice. So all those in favor?
Hi. Yeah, hi.
So who made the motion?
Um.
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Voting is open.
Oh, I think I hit the wrong thing. Hold on. What do we do? I thought yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a weirdly worded thing, yeah.
Can we edit that?
Okay, vote, vote pass four to one.
All right, so do you want to continue like in order or do you want to do the resignation stuff? Or just go along? Well, we don't have Aaron here for her reports.
Sure. So we would still want to vote on all of that.
Okay.
But as far as the order, that's up to you.
All right.
You could just go down the agenda.
So we have. Sure. Why don't we just go ahead with their retirement and all that and we'll go down. So for motion. So I'll make a motion to accept Beth Baragum's retirement with regret. Appreciate all of her years of service to middle school. I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Online voting is open.
I don't see anything. If there was a stump in the middle.
So that was in disgust. So typically also, we customarily stipulate. Americans stipulate also, sorry.
So that's.
We can redo the motion. We can put, you know.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. With regret. Including the stipend. As presented, which is on page two of her presentation. And so that again is also gonna be Jessica making that motion?
Yes.
And then the second will be Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
And online voting is open.
Turn your screen on. Yeah, it's on there. It's on there. I have a screen, sorry. Okay, I want to make screens open.
All right, that vote passed five zero.
Next we have resignations. Catherine Bowden, make a motion that we accept the resignation with regret. Make sure I look on that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I'm always in favor.
Hi.
Online voting is open. Motion passed five zero.
And we have a resignation from Susan White. Kate. Make a motion to accept with regret and thank her for her time here. Make sure to the best.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Online voting is open.
Next we have nominations.
Destroyed. Motion passed five zero.
Next we have Rachel.
Susan? No. Okay.
Make a motion to accept. Regular cell?
She's going to go there. All right, this is. Nomination as an elementary teacher for Seawell Elementary for the twenty one, twenty two school year.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Online voting is open.
And next.
There's still another one I'm waiting on. Motion passed five zero.
Next we have nomination for Seawell Elementary School elementary teacher Tammy Thompson. And motion to accept. And I guess I'll second that.
Online voting is open. Motion passed five zero.
Next we have a motion for candidate Tammy Thompson. We get instructions.
We already, we brought.
I just did that one.
The next one is two different.
R S, I think.
Things, that's why.
M W was the next one I'm on.
We did M W.
We did Rachel and then Tammy.
Oh, oh, yes, you entered. For Seawell Elementary School teacher. Make that motion to accept. A second.
Online voting is open. Motion passed five zero.
Next we have a candidate nomination for certified professional staff. Tori Warner. Make that motion to accept.
I'll second that motion.
Online voting is open. Motion passed five zero.
Now we're gonna get back to our regular. And we will start with.
If it's helpful, I did move the non-public pieces on the agenda, so if you refresh your screen, it plugged up and everything else. That way you won't have to slide up and down. Or did it? Hopefully that worked for everybody?
Yep. Middle school C B U reporting.
So we would like to respectfully ask to postpone this presentation to the August meeting.
Okay. So superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. So you have my report attached. I'll just highlight a couple pieces. Lots of planning, hiring, all of the administrative duties are full underway as far as summer activities, summer programs, and the fall. Just a little preview for student services in that we are just coming out of a compliance and monitoring process for two out of five of our districts. Seabrook is one of them. So next year we will be putting together the revised SAU twenty one Special Education Policies and Procedures Manual as required by the Bureau of Student Services in Concord. So that's something that all of our staff have been trained on. They've, they're gonna have to revise and improve some of the paperwork that we have in our forms. So that's something that I'll keep you in the loop about as we forward later this summer into the fall. And finally, just want to thank you for this opportunity. It's my last meeting as your superintendent, so I want to thank you for this. It's been an incredible learning experience, an incredible time. And so I, so I just want to make sure I take a moment to thank you for that. I'll still see you in August. So. But I did want to make sure that was said, so thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. All right, so superintendent's report. And principal's report. I don't know if there's anything that you want to mention from manager's report. And we have them in front of us. My name is Victor.
I will keep it brief. So we have included the expense year report. For the year end, we have about less than thirty days remaining in the fiscal year. So we do have a pretty good idea of how we end the school year from a financial perspective, which we do anticipate returning a fairly large sum of funds to the town to offset assessment. You know, this was a challenging year from a, you know, financial management perspective. You'll see many accounts that are way over budget, you know, such as technology, building, special education, special education transportation. Then you'll see some accounts that have large overages. You see that's benefits accounts, some salaries accounts. So overall, we do anticipate having been under budget by, you know, in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, which is in line with where we want to be on a normal school year. I mean, that's, you know, a fifteen million dollar budget. That's, you know, that's a healthy. You don't want to get too close to zero. But really where we saw benefit was on the revenue side. So as you know, as I've reported in previous meetings, we did receive some federal funds through the cares ESER, stimulus packages. We also received some health insurance rebates. So that's, that's in excess of, that's probably about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When, once we close the books and the auditors, you know, reconcile all toll, they'll probably go four to four fifty. That will be returned to the town. And again, that offsets the assessment for the, you know, for local property taxes for the current year. So do you have any answer, any questions that you may have on specific line items or anything financial related?
Any questions for that?
Those great interests. I've got a pated breath.
I have something here. There's gotta be something.
That was the shortest finance report in history. All right, so nothing for continuing business, not on continued business, summer hiring.
Yes, so the summer hiring piece is that usually the board takes a hiatus for the month of July and therefore this following is being proposed for board approval. Superintendent of Schools is authorized to offer contracts during June, July, and August. Candidates' names we brought to the board for ratification at the next scheduled board meeting in August or September. So this allows us to continue with the hiring process and offer people contracts without having a meeting in July. This is an agenda item that's on all of our boards and that we bring forward every year.
Do you need a vote, you need a vote for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion to authorize superintendent of schools to offer contracts during June, July, and August.
I'll second.
I'm lost.
But when I.
Voting is open.
You're quicker than me.
I was like, do I say it? Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so school board goals work session. I mean, last year we didn't really get together like we typically do a normal year. Typically, we would go to like all, hold salt, dinner, have a work session, discuss like next year's goals. I'm not sure if that's something you guys are worried to do with COVID or if. Is that the next year? And we just need to agree on a date that everybody was free for that. So if you want to take into your calendars and maybe come up with something for. Would that be a specific one? Um, not really. I do have a schedule a couple for next month, August week two, so I don't know when, whenever.
What's that?
For August meeting. Yeah, I will be in the country. Then you just won't be here for that one. Yes, it happens. If you're left.
I'm free whenever.
All right, so let's see. Get me out. For your calendar strike. So I'm free, free pretty much any evening except for Wednesday nights. Don't work for me.
My schedule's hard for me, that's so.
And what, what week are you looking at?
I am, I'm not sure.
Are we looking at July? Yeah, typically August, but.
Usually August. It's usually our August meeting. So if you want to continue, we just had on our regular meeting, okay?
When is it?
August. Oh, you won't be there because I'm here for the seventh. Well, could we need move our, our meeting to the second of August? Would that work for everybody?
The second or the third?
I mean, the third, sorry.
The third and the. For the seven, for the seventeen?
I really have nothing else that I did except that. Sorry. Yes, I think. On July? Currently, no, August.
I thought you were moving here for all of August.
No, I.
Seven through fourteen.
Gotcha.
From my notes, seventeen.
All right, so August seventeen.
Yeah.
Or third.
We give that time off. We'll do that before thirty you don't tell.
So if you're, what I'll do is I'll just change that calendar invite. I'm gonna do it right now. And so everybody should get an update on your calendars since you're, you're moving to a higher meeting, correct? That'll be the meeting and all work session all in one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so you just did that, so hopefully you get that.
I'm gonna be on vacation that night. You made yourself a finance report.
One can only hope.
Sorry. Kind of like that on Zoom.
I'm very quiet on Zoom. Not really. All right. Got it. So now like budget development timeline.
Yes, so we included the timeline for the budget process. So that, that will be commencing in the, you know, at the building and SAU level in the, you know, August, September timeframe. As you know, we work, we try to work bottom up process where our principals work with individual departments and, you know, staff members, teachers to bring forth their needs to the administration. And we do hope to bring forth a budget to the school board by November ninth or the fourth via board docs. So that will give us the opportunity to typically Seabrook has, you, we've completed the budget in one night, but we can do it multiple evenings if we'd like. So it's really, I mean, this is a newer board with new members. So we could certainly take a little more time, do it over a couple, a couple nights. But Rhonda will be sending out calendar invites. And then we'll present that to the budget committee. It's due to them on December third. And then thereafter, once the budget committee finalizes the budget, it goes to public hearing. Now, the public hearing hasn't been scheduled because that's, that's a meeting that's owned by the budget committee. So they'll set that date. It's typically, you know, third week-ish of January. And then, once we complete that public hearing, we'll go to the deliberative session, which is scheduled for February seventh, which we are asking for approval on the next agenda item to approve February seventh as your deliberative session. And then, as you all know, we do. Why I'm wearing this? We do. Can anyone hear me? We do have election on the second Tuesday of March of the year. So that's when our budget and any warrant articles will go public for.
So as the budget representative now for the board. Am I gonna get like a calendar? So to plan your first meeting, they'll give you pretty much a calendar of a schedule of what department's in town because you do the whole town budget, not just the school. So you'll get each like night what they're gonna talk about. And then you'll get a nice big budget book or you can just give them some computerized. I almost recommend you to get the big budget book because of computerizing, sometimes you're missing paper. I ask for help. And yeah, you'll get a schedule from them. If you ever need them to help yourself. But yeah, it's, they need really a good ten pounds.
That's actually a good point. We do provide the budget and all the documentation via board docs. However, if you do have requests to get the physical copy, we can print it out and put it into a binder. Just let me know.
So you have a confirm motion to approve the February seventh, twenty twenty two date for a deliberative session?
Yes, please. The only last note is that there is a snow date. So hopefully we do not encounter that. But should we have to reschedule, it'll be on February ninth.
Okay, with February ninth. I'll make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Online voting is open. And the dates that were anticipated for the Seabrook Board Budget Review, we did set two nights per Matt's recommendation. And we did pick Tuesdays because those are good for you, right? Okay, we have them on the calendars, November twenty third and November thirtieth. You have to meet, so I will go ahead and see what was those invites to.
Yeah, I mean, we usually do it in one night. It's whatever everybody's comfortable with. Does a really good job at kind of like picking out like the changes that.
Just want to make sure we have a second night just in case.
We will really have a second. We usually order out.
You've done it one night every year since I've been here, but.
It'll be Jersey Mike's.
Jersey Mike's.
So the vote on deliberative session passed five zero?
So, all right, Seabrook, SAU twenty one Seabrook discussion. So this is, we don't probably won't have time to do into detail this, but it was something that I asked for on the agenda to discuss the possibility of. to discuss the possibility of what it would look like for Seabrook to withdraw from the SAU twenty-one. There's, I know there's a process to it, it's something that actually has to go on the ballot for the town to vote on in March to even do a survey, like a study, to even do a study for it. So I'm not sure if anybody's interested, I've been looking into some things, I think that. My reasoning is, I think it might save us money, more one-on-one attention, more local control, that type of stuff. So I just was kind of like throwing that out there for today, just to kind of get a feel, I'm not asking for a vote or anything like that. We can bring it up at another meeting, so I know it's just, it's getting late and I'm just kinda like springing it on you guys. But do your own like digging, look into it, see what you think, and maybe we can talk about it at another meeting.
Might be helpful to reach out to Hampton and see.
I have. My sister-in-law is a mother, so. So that was just something that I've thrown out there as an idea, I think Hampton has felt that they've benefited from it. You can look into Hampton, you can look at their budget, what they pay out, that type of thing, do your own work, and maybe come back and we'll talk about it the next meeting or the meeting after.
Hey, what parents are you into being asked, have you ever looked into it?
I've, I've asked about it in the past. They actually did, I think, a study in the past about it, but I, I think it had included like Seabrook withdrew on Winnetkinet, and that's not what I'm asking for, cuz that would not even be feasible, our kids would not, I mean, have sports, they would, they would lose a lot, but withdrew on Winnetkinet. So be elementary, middle proposing a new SAU, but similar to how Hampton does. We're there, we have our own administration. Administration.
Jessica, do you want me to, I have a little information process.
If you want, yeah, yeah, sure.
If you're interested. So you're correct, the, the process does include, you know, you would be forming a committee, so there'd be a withdrawal committee, which would, you know, that's, that's the Seabrook community. Unfortunately, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like the administrators that are any part of that. So it really would need a strong group of Seabrook residents to push it forward, it's a lot of work. And then, or decide to put it on the, on the ballot as a warrant article to conduct a feasibility study. So at which point, it would be both, you'd be essentially asking the community for support of the concepts, and also there's a monetary component, so you'd hire independent contractors to actually do the study alongside the, you know, the committee that was formed. Now, I agree with Winnetkinet, because it, it, it's really, it'd be really difficult on, on Winnetkinet's side. I think, cuz I, I actually checked with legal counsel, just to understand what we have to do. And Seabrook would actually be responsible for paying their portion of like debt payments. So like the bond on the high school would be payable, any, any outstanding debt, which obviously that just costs whatever. And then you have to figure out, well, where's, where are our kids going to school?
Yeah, now.
We're gonna build a school? So, and it's not even, geographically, there's not even anywhere to like join another SAU or anything. So in any event, so those, that's, those are the kind of initial steps. I will say, from a financial standpoint, like, so you, you mentioned Hampton, they, they have, you can go online, and there's, they had their budget, SAU services. Now, I will note that that's, that's not apples and apples. So that's, that's just, and they, they include, you know, I mean, you don't see it there, but I actually have the backup. So they'll include like some technology and some, you know, buildings cost and like postage, the normal SAU costs in addition to salaries. But what's not there is like benefits, for example. So that's fifty percent of costs right there, when you add in retirements, health insurance, you know, FICA. Then you don't, they don't have, you know, in our, embedded in our SAU costs are, you know, all the professional development that we have. So all the competency-based education work that we've done as far as consultant, as far as professionally, you know, bringing together curriculum teams, that's, that's all embedded in the SAU, whereas at Hampton, it's embedded in the rest of the budget. So it's, a lot of the costs that you've got in our budget, it's spread out in the Hampton budget. So it's not, it's definitely not apples and apples. I'll tell you, like from a financial standpoint, you know, your, Seabrook is, is sharing the costs with Hampton Falls, North Hampton, South Hampton, Winnetkinet. You, you have all those same costs, but then you'd be paying a hundred percent of them. So there's no way you're gonna save costs. Now, that being said, you'd make some cuts, like you would, you would remove this director of student service that I had to use. I mean. No, no, you need the business administrator. But, you know, you'd probably remove the assistant superintendent, you, you know, there'd be some areas where you'd cut. Hampton really cut, when they withdrew, they went bare bones. But you'll, you'll see, like, so that first year after they withdrew, their budget dropped by three percent. But then over the next nine years, their budget went up forty-two percent. Now, in comparison, Seabrook's budget went up seventy percent. This is based on the state of New Hampshire reporting on, on operating budget. That, and that's apples to apples, because they remove capital expenses, so that's service, so that, so that doesn't include them building a school. Like that's, that comes out of it. So that, that doesn't include special education tuition, uh, the replacements. That doesn't include transportation, because those are more variable, it's just the core operating cost. So that's a twenty-five percent differential, because obviously, if you talk to Hampton, they're gonna say, it's working great. And they position it that way. But in reality, if you look at the numbers, they're absolutely spending a heck of a lot more than if they were in SAU twenty-one. That's just a fact, and that's, that's the finances. Now, there's other reasons to, if you were looking to withdraw, that's not financial, but from a financial perspective, it's a, it's a no-brainer. Cuz there's other, there's other aspects. You look at health insurance. So you are, so at Seabrook is currently part of the SAU twenty-one pool. When you, when, when the health insurance carriers set rates, premiums, the bigger the pool, the lower the rates. So then, so when you withdraw, it's a much smaller pool, rates increase. When you look at all the client, all the purchasing that we do across the SAU, when you talk about our SIS, the Power Schools, so SIS, Student Information System, when you look at, you know, our websites, our, we just implemented a cop, a printer and copier contract, SAU-wide with Canon, which saves, I mean, it saves Seabrook about thirty thousand dollars right there. When you're looking at our Chromebooks purchases, when we're buying across all of our districts, we save money. So it just, there are so many examples where we say, we're either saving money by quantity of scale or saving money because we're sharing amongst our districts. Now, that being said, which I alluded to, it's not just money. Money is a clear case, it's not, it's not a, it's not a winner. But, you know, you see occasionally, like there's a Hampton, there's, there's other schools across the state that do separate. And that's, but that's, it's, the legitimate reason is, if, if you want, not legitimate reason. Cuz I, I think there are some instances where there might be financial considerations, not in this case. But local control, so you're, the ability that you, you have all that decision-making, you know, talking about kind of SAU-wide decision-making, you're a voice, you're not the full voice, right? That being said, and I think, and I think there's been some instances in years past, just from what I've heard, even from our legal counsel, where there may have been more of a, there, there, there was some reasons that Seabrook might wanna separate. They, they, there was a study done nineteen eighty, feasibility study, a feasibility study done in eighty-eight, and another one done in two thousand. All of them resulted in the determination that didn't make sense to go forward, but there's obviously interest throughout. I, I have them actually on my desk, they're like this thick. You do not wanna read them, I didn't.
So was the interest for the same reason or three times?
I can't speak to the motivation, I, I have no idea, but I've heard stories from years past, which I, I believe were, were, were passed or getting passed. Because I, I will say that when we look at how this affects students, I, I personally feel that it's a no-brainer that it is in the best interest of our Seabrook students to stay aligned with, with SAU twenty-one. When you're looking at the implementation of CBE with all those standards, with all those, all those QPAs, all the rubrics, we are developing curriculum across the entire SAU with, with all our districts to prepare all of our students in the same manner and offer them the same ability to achieve once they hit Winnetkinet. Now, if they weren't going to Winnetkinet, you know, it's a different argument. But we want, I mean, we're, we're, we're starting to implement these program reviews, right? So we started this year with, with the math, the math program. And you saw how detailed and how real, how, how there's some real data there that we can make some positive changes. Because students at Seabrook were not given the opportunity to attain levels of math, of, of math achievement at Winnetkinet based on the curriculum at Seabrook. So, so we had one school where kids could get to achieve, you know, BC calculus, but Seabrook could not. So these are the type of questions we wanna do, we wanna align that curriculum, so all of our students can, can make it, have the same opportunity once they get to Winnetkinet. Where, where the next, the next program review will be world language, which I, I think you're all somewhat familiar with, some of those, the issues that we've encountered. And we're gonna continue those program reviews, we're gonna continue the rubric work, the QPAs, so that we can give, so we can align across the entire SAU and give all of our students an opportunity. And simply put, if, if Seabrook is not part of SAU twenty-one, they will not, they will, that work will, we will try to work together, but it won't be the same. I mean, we tried to do it in Hampton, but it just doesn't happen.
I think that's one of my concerns, I feel like that Seabrook has been waiting for a really long time to measure up to the other districts that wanna come in, and I don't feel like we're still there. I, I feel like Seabrook kids are left in the dust in a lot of ways at Winnetkinet.
And I think the parents.
Not just educationally, but just because they live here.
I, I mean, I don't even, I don't think, I mean, I agree with that, but I also believe that I feel like from when so my children are twenty-three, they came to Seabrook. And there's a huge difference between my two children at twenty-three and my two children living out here in other town. I feel like the communication and the say that the parents have for their own children. And I feel like everything has just, it, it's so much different. I, I feel, I feel like from the communication and what goes on, you know, to me, it's a financial aspect, yes, but it's not so much a financial aspect for me. It's the, just the whole entire atmosphere. I feel like the parents really are left in the dark, I feel like that there's no communication. I feel like it's too big, there's, the SAU is too big. And that we, they forget that, you know, I mean, every town is different, it's an SAU, but I feel like Seabrook is so small that we used to know what's going on with our children, where you used to be able to pick up a phone and call and not have to write ten emails to get a response, or, and I'm not unhappy with the teachers, it's not the teacher aspect. I feel like, like he said, it's more the, the culture. And that scares me, because I can tell you, I, I'm gonna tell you, this is my part, this is my, this is what comes to my mind when I think about this decision for me to even consider this, because I never thought I would. If, before I became a school board member, if somebody came to me and said this, I'd say, oh no, I don't think we can handle this. When we ever had that school board meeting at Winnetkinet with parents lining up to talk, and it seemed like nobody had, I don't wanna say nobody, cuz that's not true, there was a level of, let's just get this over. Like, the parents are there concerned, they're concerned about going back to school, they're concerned about their kids' health and welfare and how depressed they were. And there were some of us that were really focused, that were like really concerned, and then I could feel, and I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be blunt, I could feel from administration, just like it was, they were just being bothered, they didn't have time for this. And to me, I live in a small town where everyone knows everyone, and if your child, and your child, your child's in the middle of the road or they're misbehaving in the park, like I'm gonna run to that child. And I feel like that atmosphere in the school is not there anymore as it used to be, and that's, that's my biggest concern. The financial aspect to me is the least of my worries, just the culture.
I feel like Seabrook pays a lot of money and don't really get their money to work sometimes because of, I mean, where we are educationally compared to some of the other schools in the district. I feel like the SAU has gotten very administratively heavy.
We had, had lean parades where kids dressed up and had fun. These kids, it's just stiff, you know, they, you gotta give these kids a reason to wanna come to school. You know, Seabrook, it'll learn, but this is where they're supposed to have their biggest memories. And I feel like that in the last couple years, it's not, and it's not just COVID, it was before COVID, that no one wants to be bothered. I think maybe we're on a different level, I think the education, you're right. But to me, it's also that these kids, they need a reason to have fun, like what you do with your program is amazing, and thank God, no, I'm, I'm, I'm being honest.
I appreciate that, I do like that, so.
Because regardless of COVID, you still went out on a limb to take these kids out. And I think we had to be safe, but even before COVID, I feel like, you know, it's just, you gotta give a kid a reason to look forward to Winnetkinet, you gotta give them a reason. You know, we also heard that they wanted to bring in, I won't get off subject here, but they wanted to bring in, the PTO wanted to bring in and pay for every single grade in this school to have the zoo. And it was turned down. Why? That, can you imagine what kind of damage? Yes, the PTO offered to pay for, they, they, they approached. Yeah, they approached the PTO to ask them to pay, who's in the kindergarten. And they offered to pay nine thousand dollars to have the zoo, that, that animal or whatever come in for every single child, they even came up with a plan on hours to make sure there wasn't too many kids, to be one hundred percent fully compliant. And it was, no, thank you, we're, we're not gonna do that, but we might think of something else. And it's, when you hear that, you're like, these kids have been through, sorry, hell, they've had no fun. And why? How would that have hurt? That would've given them one day to completely get a break and enjoy, and that's what we would've done in the past. And I don't see that happening, like that is my biggest concern.
So if I could just add something about this to your mind. So I, I totally agree that there, there is, you know, there's, it remains a cultural issue at Winnetkinet. Being from Winnetkinet, I know the struggle working to integrate students with, with disabilities from all the same districts. So when they come in, we work with them, it's a, it's a very extensive transition process. And when we work with SA ninety, it's not their fault, it's just they're a different SAU. So when we work with SA ninety, it's a whole, it's, it's like from scratch every single time. It's from scratch every single time. So if any of our other districts separated as well, that would be putting another barrier between Winnetkinet and Seabrook. So I feel very strongly about this, in that, you know, of course, you have to do the right thing for, for the culture of Seabrook. But if the goal is to be student-driven and have students as a priority and to increase communication and, and to break down barriers, the, the action should not be create a new barrier. You know, misalign, separate away from where your students go to ninth grade, this is just the beginning. And so we wanna, we wanna create more ways, whether it's competence. And so we wanna, we wanna create more ways, whether it's competency-based, social, emotional, kids with disabilities, whatever we're doing, we want to work as hard as we can for that sweet spot between eighth and ninth grade. You know, we can work internally, you, your administration can work internally as far as, you know, some of the things that you're asking for, Kelly, some of the things that you wanna see come back here after COVID. But as far as transitioning to another school, you already have your own district. You already have your own board. That's something that affords you local control, your own district within S A U twenty-one. So, you know, I can understand if it was just S A U twenty-one, one district, and you're feeling like, wow, we have to do what everybody else does. I outlined pretty specifically in, in my reflection in May, as far as there are going to be times when you wanna work together and times when you wanna work autonomously, and that's perfectly fine, and that's, and that's, that's something that needs to stay, and I don't think will ever change. You have to work apart in some ways. But, you know, I hope that we can keep students in, in mind when we, when we make decisions. I know you, you care deeply about the students. And I know all of this kind of administrative stuff can, can be really, you know, a lot of pressure and a lot of influence on, on what we do. But, um, at the end of the day, you know, I would hope that, you know, we could look at the issues and work on those issues. You know, whether it's culture here, whether it's transitioning kids to, to the high school, um, without having to, to make changes administratively. That would impact the community financially as well. So that's my piece, I'll stop there.
We've got goals, we've developed an audience, yeah.
And Forrest up in the journey item here.
Yeah.
Do you?
All right, Forrest, go ahead.
Matt, do you want me to take a lead on this, or?
Um, well, maybe I can open and then you can fill in the.
That's an hour, all right.
So, um, so this, this is actually really exciting. This is an opportunity that, 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 um, you know, S A S and, and, well, and Forrest as a director, um, brought, brought to Aaron, Caroline and myself, the pension, um, where they're, they're reapplying for the Twenty-First Century, um, I mean, grant, something grant.
Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center. It's been my life last year.
Which is included, and it's like two hundred pages, it's incredibly long. And, um, and so there's the opportunity to expand that program. So currently, it's middle school down to the, um, elementary level. And we are, and we were incidentally looking at different ways that we could service our elementary-level students. Because we, there were, you know, we had in the past C stars, which, um, you know, that wasn't, um, necessarily the most effective means of, of servicing those students. So, um, this is actually a great opportunity where, um, we, actually, Forrest is submitting the, the application tomorrow and, um, pending board support because there's, similar to the middle school program, um, the, the school is required to supplement, um, that program, so it's, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. Luckily, we do have those E S R funds that can, um, supplement it for, you know, the next couple of years. But it, I will note, it will need to be absorbed into the operating budget, um, at some point, um, after those E S R funds, um, are, you know, do expire. So, um, so I, I'm sure Forrest can, can give you all the details about how great the program is. But that is the, that's the summary of what we're, what we're asking, um, the board, we're asking approval to, um, to move forward with that, that program, which I think we all know is amazing.
I appreciate that, guys. So, yeah, Matt, you did a great job of explaining that. Basically, what's happening this year is we're up for, um, refunding. So even if we weren't thinking about doing the elementary portion of the grant, we could still be writing the middle school, see create that additional five years. Uh, after speaking with our state director at the Twenty-First Century Learning Centers up at the G O E, um, she thought it was the best year for us to add our elementary program. We've, we've proven that we can make a difference, we are in state, we're actually moving to our horn here. And it is not just me, in fact, it is all of our staff that really brings this together. I just personally, people work and give kids smiles and high fives, they do all of the hard work, and they, they come to that. But we, we're an award, award-winning program throughout the state, you know, there, when, when we see a problem or we see an issue, and Kelly, I'm really glad you mentioned that about, that actually really did mean a lot. Because our staff were this entire year, when the school, and this is not a negative reflection or a, a date or anything, but when we were shut down, we were still finding, our staff were still finding ways between in-person, until that small bracket of time, between November and January, where it was full shutdown, we still were running five days a week of virtual program, we did academic support, we did every program you could think of. Our staff did tutorials, I have a question on Facebook and our website. One of our, one of our, our workers developed a website for us to have a brand-new staff platform. So it's not just about S A S and the fun stuff we do with the kids, it's the staff and, and the family that we cultivate along the way. And we now are ready to take on a bigger chunk, and we are ready to write for the elementary. So what that means for numbers is that right now, our goal for the middle school is fifty kids per day, that's what we write into the grant. We are now going to be operating over fifty spots for elementary. So now, I'm gonna tell you flat out, our goal is fifty, we weren't in school here on any given day, it's between sixteen and eighty-five is our range of kids, and that's middle school. So I don't think we're gonna have a problem reading the fifty, I think our biggest issue is gonna be the waitlist and then targeting. That's a wonderful problem right there, because we're gonna have the basis of a program. You know, Matt, you mentioned C stars, and C stars was, was, was an incredible, and I'm just gonna go out and let me say it's an incredible first step. I think that there were some components that were missing, and of course, it was based on federal funding, so there were certain regulations you could or couldn't do. But what S A S does is takes that academic piece, that really C stars did so well, embed more of that enrichment academic piece into it, and get the kids there. And that's the key, that the carrot dangling in the brim are the adventures. So those are the fun things that they get to do. And when it's gonna embed that experiential learning and, and all of that, the project-based learning, all that into it, we're, our goals in this, and I will definitely send this to you guys to look at, but our goals are to increase, states have to support this. Our goals are to increase, um, behaviors in the classroom, not in a negative way. We don't, we don't wanna increase the bad ones, you know, we wanna, uh, hopefully minimize some of those. But it's to really offer that alignment with the school day, and we're super, super, super excited for it. So I have been working on this for, COVID really ruined our, the whole day. So this typically, the grant is released in December, in January, you have a month and a half to two months to write it. You get it in and you write two months before you hear about it. The time scale this year is that they pushed this back, the R F A, which is the actual breakdown, you need to include into it, um, to the middle of May. So I had been waiting to the middle of, of May, and then they gave us two and a half weeks to send it. So, this is the grant right here, it has taken a lot of blood, sweat and tears. My husband does not love me right now, because I've seen him for two and a half weeks. Literally, all right. But yeah, we're, we're excited for it, I can't wait to be able to offer double programming here, and we're just waiting for board approval.
You want to push that moment? You're putting some of my kids up. Right now.
Young, we're talking here.
I know, like.
So it's K through four.
Sorry, now that mine are going to middle school, you're gonna. I know.
Oh, that's awesome. I make that motion.
I second.
See, I have all the hover pitches.
Yes.
Online voting is open as well? And Forrest, are you voting or abstaining or?
Um, what would you prefer?
Abstain.
You should.
Yeah.
Double, double.
Thank you, Forrest, for all you do for our kids.
Motion passed four to zero to one.
Oh, Jess.
This is our, that's our board schedule, um, Seabrook School, School Board, um, meeting, it will be our, um, goal setting meeting and regular meeting. And I believe it's August seventeenth, did we change that?
Yes.
Fourth thirty, and at the Old Salt, um, somebody will call to trust me about reservations, thank you, Ron. And, uh, Joint Board Policy Committee meeting Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-one at five P M. Be formal, I'm sure.
Motion, Jen?
Second.
Who's a favor?
Thank you all.